the Morehead City Council meeting to order. So, good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, you'll need to fill out a form provided by the city clerk and I will call you up during the citizens to address the council meeting item on the agenda. You'll need to state your name and if you are a Morehead resident. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into the record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at moreheadmm.gov. We, the Morehead City Council, collectively and with gratitude acknowledge this sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, Ojibwe, Mati and all Indigenous communities permeate this land. With that, could I get a roll call, please?
Ryan Nelson.
Here.
Nicole Mattson.
Here.
Heather Niesmeyer.
Here.
Emily Moore.
Here.
Deb White.
Lisa Borgen.
Sebastian McDougall.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Present.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here. And council member Mattson, you will need to have your camera turned on for the duration of the meeting, just a reminder. Thank you. And for those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. And do we have India Agenda Amendment, City Manager Molly?
Yes, Mayor. We have a request to remove item 8A from the consent agenda and an inclusion of, the addition of recording title and summary as item 10F.
Okay, is 10F on the consent agenda?
No, we would be adding that. Or, I'm sorry, that would be on the consent agenda. Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Okay, with those agenda amendments, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, Niesmeyer.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesmeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougall?
Aye.
Hendrickson.
Right, that motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mattson?
Yes.
Niesmeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougall?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Aye.
Right, that motion carries as well. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, we have a presentation tonight from the University of Minnesota Extension. So, please go up to the podium and thank you for being here tonight. And you can, you can begin at any time.
Can I? Oh, no, we went backwards one. There we go. Hi, hello, welcome. We're glad to be here today, tonight, to talk about Clay County Extension. Clay County Extension partners with the University of Minnesota as well as Clay County Government, and we bring research-based education and hands-on learning right here in Clay County to the residents of our community. So whether they're looking to grow healthy gardens, strengthen their family and community, or explore 4H programs, Extension is here to help. Jill's going to share next about Extension in the county.
All right. Good evening. Extension's mission is to be accessible to everybody in the county, connect people with practical solutions and resources, build individual skills and strengthen communities, connecting you with the knowledge, tools and support that create a meaningful change at home, at work and across our communities. I am Jill Patri and I am the Extension Horticulture Educator, and I also support our master gardeners in the county.
I'm Amelia Landsberg, one of our 4H educators in Clay County.
And I am Monique Stelzer, also a 4H Youth Development Extension educator in Clay County. So, National 4H Week was actually held back in October. It's the first full week of, the first full week in October. National 4H Week is the national celebration and recognition of 4H youth development programs across the country. We did declare that or have a proclamation made by the Clay County Government back in that first week during National 4H Week. So anyways, we just wanted to say and recognize that that has been going on for close to two decades now. National 4H Week has been a long effort within our community, so we recognize locally as well as nationally.
Okay, so kind of going along with the initiative that we have with National 4H Week, 4H is, as you can see, building a ready generation. So we do this by developing capable, caring and contributing young people who strengthen communities and support local priorities through things like hands-on learning, in leadership, health, STEM and agriculture. 4H prepares youth to become responsible citizens whose positive impact extends beyond themselves and creates long-term value for families, communities and society as a whole, including the Morehead community. Young people leave 4H ready for work and ready for life. In Clay County specifically, 4H clubs contribute to their communities through various service projects like growing food to reduce food insecurity, labeling stormwater drains to protect our water supply, painting fire hydrants to help maintain our emergency services system and picking up garbage to beautify our public roadways. Clay County 4Hers understand that being a responsible citizen means caring for yourself and your community.
Through 4H's workshop events and volunteer engagement, Extension staff builds a community of empowered young people as well as volunteers. Last year, Clay County provided direct programming to 702 young people across the county and staff led more than 100 workshops, events and meetings. As a youth development professional, we don't do it alone. This is why we identify, train and support volunteers who help lead the young people and the programs in our community. Our work with volunteers enables local Extension staff to reach a larger number of young people. On top of building a strong volunteer base, Extension staff works directly with local youth through program-based learning opportunities that we provide through after-school programs, day camps, training workshops and project learning communities.
Clay County 4H has seen high numbers of retention and growth in the past year. The youth that we serve in our programs and clubs are able to build life skills, once again, through project-based learning and leadership opportunities that prepare them for similar experiences once they've left our organization. While 4H does directly develop life skills in young people, the ripple effect extends beyond into families, schools, communities, local economies and the broader public. Because youth are presented with the opportunity to participate in 4H programs and clubs, they can then bring the knowledge and experience that they gained in Extension into other areas of their lives and the community. Oh my gosh, I have one more. So, this is Bridgette Hendrickson. She's one of our outstanding youth members who exhibited at the state fair this year. She also serves as a club officer for one of our community clubs and helps with our after-school program in Barnesville. She's not here with us today, but she is just a really good example of our youth members stepping up into leadership roles and making the most of these 4H experiences. If you'd like to hear about Bridgette's statement that she made at the board meeting in October, you can do so by watching that recording.
Okay. All right. Hello again. A little bit more about horticulture. Within Extension, horticulture education falls under the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, or ANR for short. This area of Extension aims to provide effective research-based education and integrate, and also integrates diverse perspectives to address critical issues impacting Minnesota's agriculture and natural resources. In Clay County, I engage with colleagues, partners, stakeholders and volunteers to define resident and community issues and develop lasting solutions. So, a bit about ag and natural resources here in Clay County. I've reached 141 plus more since this was done in October. Technical assistance questions, so people call into the office or stop by or I visit their home to answer questions related to all things plants. We also have done 31 county-level workshops, events and meetings, 35 community partnerships this year, 11 gardening radio spots, so I go on a few gardening radio stations and answer questions and then also write for the FM Extra, too. All right, master gardeners, by the numbers. It's not showing up there, but it's okay. There's, oh, there you go. It was an extra click. All right, so as of right now, we have 21 active Clay County master gardeners. We have seven interns this year will be completing the program at the end of the month. We've done total, 12 total educational events with the master gardeners here, 11 projects, gardens. Those include gardens, community beautification efforts. Last year, we reported 728 volunteer hours, so it's here in Clay County. And then we have five interns for our 2026 core course. So, we're really looking forward to the next year and all the great stuff that we're going to be doing. One of those things is the Second Annual FM Flutter Fest. So last year, this last year, we did our first annual Flutter Fest just to bring pollinator habitat awareness to the community and have people engage in that effort. Sydney Stock also is an intern this year, and she's really been critical in FM Flutter Fest and a lot of other projects here throughout Clay County and the area. And she's just really been a great asset to our group this year.
Okay. In addition to all of our individual program priorities, we also work together as a team to support programming in the county. So as a team, we utilize each other's expertise to elevate our programming through collaborative, collaborative efforts. These have included things like the Clay County Fair, 4H after-school programs, summer camps, 4H project activity day and community events like Flutter Fest, as Jill just mentioned.
All right. The Extension Service brings university knowledge directly to our communities through direct programming, community partnerships and volunteer service by offering free and trusted education in areas like horticulture, youth development and family wellness. Extension makes everyday life better with, while strengthening the places we live, work and play.
Extension, Extension equips individuals with skills that ripple outward. We help reduce public costs by fostering resilience and ensuring a healthier, more prosperous future for everyone throughout our community. Extension starts by providing private value to our program participants. Those participants gain knowledge, they gain skills and they gain experience through our Extension programs. But the benefit doesn't stop there. Those same participants take those skills and those experiences forward to the other people and the other places that they connect with, whether it's on their community board, at a community event, or sharing that knowledge and skill that they've learned in Extension at their churches, their schools or their community groups. People who participate in Extension programs gain knowledge, skills and then apply those assets throughout the other areas of their lives. So that creates the public value that Extension brings to an organization as well as a community.
All right. To wrap things up, the Extension Service transforms university research into practical, locally-focused education that improves everyday life, strengthens families and communities, supports economic growth, protects natural resources and reduces public costs, creating lasting value for every citizen. And with that, we are done with our presentation and we'll take any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all you do, Jill, Amelia and Monique. Just two questions. How many Morehead residents participate in your programs and even more specifically, how many students from Morehead participate?
Kids first or you first? Well, it really varies on my education events. So, it does depend on the subject when people are interested, but we, for example, FM Flutter Fest was over 150 people who showed up to that. Or if it's a really in-person workshop, maybe we'll have 30 people or 10 people. So it really varies, but I think it's a wide array of people and we have kids come and adults come. So, my reach is, sometimes I don't know how many people, especially with like radio and newspaper.
And I'm assuming a lot of them are just, not just Morehead, they're from around the region?
No, yep. People across the river, too. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious how many from Morehead participated versus Dilworth, Glendonfielden, the county, Saban?
I would definitely say it's percentage more of Morehead residents, but if it's in Morehead, Morehead people come. And then I also go out to Barnesville and Holly, too.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Any council members have any comments or questions?
down. Family members age in, family members age out. 4-H is a program that serves an entire family, and those clubs welcome all young people within that family unit to a club. So that would be like those community clubs, but we also have program partnerships that specifically target community groups like New Roots Midwest, Brazilla Africa, NADA, and the AAD, Afro-American Development Association, and New American Development Association. So when you start bringing those numbers in, which those are all Morehead residents as well, we're reaching over 100, about 100, 125 kids through those program partnerships also. And then when you're looking at our after-school programs, we actually partner with every school district throughout the county. And then Morehead Public Schools, we had had last spring programming in all five elementary schools through the community ed program, and we were, 75 to 100 kids enrollment across those programs, and we did multiple programs with Morehead Community Ed. We also did a six-week science program with Morehead Middle School. So, and that one, I think we had like 15 kids in that one. So if you add it all together, and then you have to remember some of those kids are in clubs as well as after-school programs, we start talking about duplicates, but I ballpark off my head, we're probably pushing 250-ish for just Morehead city residents for youth and families.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much for coming and presenting to the City Council tonight and for sharing this great information and all the things that you do in our community.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, moving on to the approval of the November 10th, 2025 meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Don't move Nelson.
Second, more. Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nisa Meyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Moving on to citizens who wish to address the council. I do not believe we have any citizens present today who wish to address the council. So moving on to 8A, which was removed from the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a request to remove this item from Councilmember White.
Thank you.
Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first request that, we have two nominations on this, and I'd like to request that we discuss them separately and vote on them with two separate motions.
I'd like to motion to appoint Steve Lindas to the Ward Two spot that's open on the Morehead Public Service Committee.
I guess, first of all, do we need to address, do we have to have a motion to address them separately, or is that, we can just move on?
Madam Mayor, the two items could be split, so you could ask for motion, separate motions, or they can be moved together. It's up to the council member making the motion.
Okay, but we don't need to have Councilmember White make a motion to have them separately? Just move on? Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second to appoint Councilmember Lindas. Motion by Nisa Meyer, second by White. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Nelson?
No.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nisa Meyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
No.
Hendrickson?
No.
Okay, so that was four to three. It's a simple majority. Okay, so with four to three, that appointment passes. So on to the second appointment. So I don't, the second appointment was pulled off consent agenda, so.
Madam Mayor, you'd ask three times if there's a motion, and then if there's no motion, then it dies for a lack of emotion.
Okay. Is there a motion?
My computer locked up here. Motion to approve the appointment, Ron Carlson Jr. of the Airport Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. It's with regret that I raised this objection to Mayor Carlson's nomination of her husband, Ron Carlson, to serve on the Airport Commission. Let me begin by saying that my objections are not meant to disparage or call into question the qualification of the mayor's husband, but stem instead from my deep commitment to maintaining the integrity of our governing practices and bolster citizen engagement. Selecting individuals to serve on boards and commissions is an important responsibility that I do not take lightly. Our boards and commissions serve as important means to empower our citizens and broaden the voices involved in decision-making in our city. I question how those nine or more citizens who applied but were not selected will feel after having the mayor select her own husband. I worry that it might discourage people from applying in the future if they question the integrity of the selection process. I also question whether this appointment would cause other members of the Airport Commission to feel less comfortable in the future expressing opinions that are counter to the opinions of the city leadership. It is because of these reasons that I cannot in good conscience support the mayor's recommendation. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, there's a motion and a second. I would like to address what Councilmember White stated. There has, and perhaps I'm more than happy to withdraw my nomination, but for the record to be set straight, the Airport Committee is a committee that obviously is very specific to people who fly and who utilize airports, and none of the other applicants had experience as a pilot or utilized in airports besides people just flying. My husband does have pilot experience and has been a pilot for almost 15, 20 years. So I waited a period of time, no applicants came in, and that was the reason why I selected him. This is a committee that meets four times a year. We haven't really had much issues or controversy surrounding that. It's actually one item that I talked to Councilmember Nisa Meyer about since she serves on the Airport Committee, and she actually stated to me that she didn't see any concern with that. But I did look today when I heard that this item was going to be removed, and there is another individual that I would like to speak to that actually has more experience than my husband, but I already had this process in place, so more than happy to withdraw my nomination. So I don't know how that works with a motion and a second, but.
Well, Madam Mayor, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so either the person who made the motion, the person who seconded would have to agree to withdraw it, or the motion could be voted down so that you could withdraw your nomination.
All right, thank you. So I would be respectfully requesting that the motion be withdrawn. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will respectfully withdraw my nomination and allow you to go back and reanalyze future nomination.
And then with the individual who seconded it?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, thank you. So the motion's been withdrawn. Thank you. Moving on, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so. Moving on to 18A, the first reading of ordinance 25-12, an ordinance adopting the 2026 fee schedule. I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Jenica Flanagan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am presenting for your consideration the first reading of the ordinance adopting the 2026 fee schedule. The proposed schedule, included in your agenda packet, provides comprehensive overview of the fees associated with the City of Morehead services, including utility fees, licenses, permits, golf fees, and various recreation programs. As part of the annual budget process, review of the fee schedule is conducted to ensure that the fees collected adequately support the city's operational and programmatic costs. These updates, along with the projected revenues, have been incorporated into the 2026 budget, which is scheduled for final approval at the upcoming council meeting on December 8. At that same meeting, we will also conduct the second reading of this ordinance. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nisa Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Flanagan, could you tell us if residents who, just seeing this fee schedule and the information in the packet, have thoughts, questions, concerns, where they would go with those at this point?
If they have questions on the fee schedule?
Yeah.
Sure. Yep, they could send any questions to me or the City Manager.
So to the City Manager or the Finance Department of the City of Morehead?
Yep.
Marvelous. And phone or email works?
Yes, both.
Marvelous. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second Nelson.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nisa Meyer?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Flanagan. Moving on to 18B, this is a resolution to approve the 2026 to 2030 Transportation Development Plan, and I will turn this over to Adam Altenberg with MetroCog.
All right.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time here tonight. Again, my name is Adam Altenberg, and I'm with the Fargo-Morehead Metropolitan Council of Governments. We're here with MatBus tonight to present the 2026-2030 Transit Development Plan. This is a federally and state-required document that outlines a five-year strategy for improving public transit services in the Fargo-Morehead metropolitan area. Plan assesses current transit operations, identifies community needs, and establishes goals, performance measures, and implementation strategies to maintain and enhance service in our area. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Blue Weber with Bolton and Mink. He's part of our consultant team that helped to develop this plan.
Perfect. Thank you for having me this evening. Like Adam said, my name is Blue Weber, just like the color, I promise. That is my real name, here to really just go over the process that we've been working on for about the past 16 months for the Transit Development Plan. So the team was made up of a lot of the MatBus staff, as well as Adam and some of the other members over at MetroCog, really trying to get as many perspectives from that project management team to help us guide us through that process. I was the engagement lead on this process, but our project manager, who is based out of Minneapolis, is always available for any questions, if there are any follow-up questions that any council members have. So the final plan review really is broken down into these five different sections. The existing conditions, which was an analysis of everything that was in the existing conditions, as well as what we heard from the general public. From there, we also did a future system needs identification, looking at all of the different alternatives, everything that really kind of played into the way that we came up at the end of it. And then the actual service recommendations. So we'll break down those service recommendations based on kind of the six criteria, and then everything that we heard from the entire community, from all the communities that exist in the MatBus area, and then the coordinated transportation plan, which is a supplemental attachment on there that really looks at the human services providers within the community and how they're fit into the transportation need for bus system. So the purpose of these transit development plans is really to outline a five-year goal. And one thing that I like to say here is it would be really nice if we could just pause transit while we're working on these documents. Unfortunately, we can't. And so we know that transit is still going through everything as far as budgetary requirements, federal requirements, local context. And so some of the things that you'll see in here, you might be questioning, well, you have to remember that this has been going on for 16 months. And so, like I said, it would be really nice to pause, but unfortunately, there are some things that we always would like to factor in. So these really just kind of outline an entire plan for the next five years. Throughout the entire process, we really broke it down into these three different phases. Those existing conditions, future system needs, and then the development of the final plan as we're presenting it right now and as MatBus and MetroCog have been showing it. Where we're at right now is going through these presentations. We started them earlier in November, and we'll be going through until early December when we're looking for those final adoptions, which is what we're here for tonight. The engagement itself, which is what I got to work on, we broke down into kind of three different buckets, is the easiest way to look at it. So our Study Review Committee was made up of numerous individuals, both MatBus staff, as well as staff here at Morehead, staff in Fargo, really made up of a variety of users and leaders within the community. We also had numerous public input opportunities. These were everything from open houses to some pop-ups utilizing different tools like surveys, as well as an interactive web map. And then the focus groups really were to guide us on some of those hidden features that maybe you don't hear from the general public, as well as to really guide us on that human, the coordinated services plan. So one of the things that I think is most important to talk about here is how well the existing MatBus system works for the community. We heard outright from almost everybody that the system currently works really, really well. This is a testament to both the MatBus team, but also the entire community of Fargo-Morehead, as how well this system works. Both timing of it works really well, where it heads to for locations works really well. And so you'll see that throughout the entire service coordinated plan, that a lot of our features weren't changing up a lot of things. It was more maneuvering certain things here, there, stuff like that. So this is our preferred service plan. So this is really not necessarily exactly what MatBus needs to do, but this was how we viewed it as maybe the most beneficial. So you'll see these six different categories off to the left. I'll break those down a little bit more, but those really guided us when we came to this preferred service plan. So it's not just routes, it's everything from the financials of it, it's how these routes work, and so maybe even using some bidirectional operations, things like that. And so these were kind of the key route changes, though, so not looking at those six different elements, but really the route changes. And you'll see some of those are over here in Morehead, and we'll talk a little bit more about those. But those six different elements, I wanted to kind of just highlight really quick, and I'll try to move further as fast as possible, but regional impacts. This was a really important thing, knowing that the MatBus service is not just a single service in one area, it really does connect the entire metro area. So important for us to look at it that way. As far as, we did hear from a lot of the public that they wanted to try to keep it to a single-service transfer, so not having to jump off a bus, jump onto a new one, and then so on and so forth. So trying to minimize any of those rides through interlining. So this means trying to get buses where you can maybe stay on one bus, and then it'll move onto a different route and still operate as the same route for you. Bidirectional really means back and forth, so getting out to a location and then being able to ride back out, that really helps with timing of those routes and making sure that the entire system stays in a timely fashion. So some of the changes that we have over here in Morehead in our preferred service routes is Route Three, which is one of the most important ones, really getting down to that southern area, getting down to the Morehead High School, and improving some of that time performance for this entire area. And then Routes Four, Six, and Nine, you'll see that this kind of interworks both east to west, as well as north to south, and really making as many connections as possible. So even creating things like the Route Six A and B and making that entire operation work really smooth. So for that final plan, we did start receiving some feedback all the way back in August on this, on the final plan. And so we've been receiving feedback all the way from there up until about October, when we really kind of closed that public comment period to make sure that we were able to bring you all this final draft. So some of these are just some of the important notes that we heard from some of that final feedback. Service frequency and reliability, equity and accessibility, fair structure and funding, just kind of a few of those things that we really brought back to the team. Like I said, one of the hardest things here was the future of transit, right? I wish that we could have paused transit and really been able to work on this document. That's not the way that it works. So we know that there was some changes to things with MatBus, and so through this process, really trying to be as nimble to give them as much information. So if they have any changes in the next couple of years, this document isn't just something that looks back at time, but really can kind of guide them through what the next couple of years look like as they continue to change things. And then last point here was that coordinated plan. Like I said, this was something that we really worked with the human service providers in the area to make sure that it's an inventory of the entire. the area to make sure that it's an inventory of the entire available system. So this isn't just the Matbuses that you see in town, but as well as senior service rides, disadvantaged community rides, things like that. So really trying to find all of those different transportation services that are provided in the area. The coordinated plan had its own goals. This was something that really was kind of done in collaboration with the entire Transit Development Plan, and all of these elements really were one of the pieces that kept it moving. So, like I said, we are in our approval timeline right now, so we're out here giving these presentations, and the goal is that final plan approval at the MetroCog Policy Committee in December. With that, I will stand for any questions, and we also put Erin Bartling, who is the project manager's, information on there, but I would be more than willing to share out his personal cellphone if you want to call him for any other questions.
All right, thank you so much.
Of course.
Lot of great information, and a lot of work goes into these plans. It's not that they just get done in a few weeks. So any questions or comments from council? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank our MetroCog staff, our Matbus staff, and our consultants for the in-depth work that you've put. As the mayor said, these things don't happen overnight, and it was incredibly thorough. I appreciated in particular the effort to really gain good, detailed community input. And I just think, you know, given the challenges that we've seen recently and that we know are down the road, it's things like this that are really valuable for allowing us to work together, you know, in a partnership with the other cities, and also to make those informed decisions that we need in order to really help continue to have a successful transit system. So just really wanted to say thank you for the great work that all of you have put into this.
Thank you. And one thing I will say, I live in Grand Forks, it's always really fun to get to explore different communities. The Matbus Coordination Committee is one of those elements that I'm trying to encourage more communities to do, because I really do think that it serves such a great purpose of making sure that the communities know how to work collaboratively on all of the things, especially around transit.
Thank you. Councilmember Neesmeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you being here, the MetroCog staff, as well as the consultants. Now, for those who may not want to slide through slides, and they see this final plan, you mentioned that you're going to several municipal spots to get approval of the final plan, what does it mean to the people of our communities? What changes, what things can they look for, and when?
Yeah, I don't know. Adam, if you want to answer, I mean...
Some people just may want to know why we're here and why we're doing this.
Totally.
And so I think the end would be really great to discuss. So anybody who wants to share, I welcome, and thank you.
Thank you. So my name's Cole Swinging. I work for Matbus, City of Fargo. If there are any residents of Morehead, Dilworth, West Fargo, or Fargo who take a look at the plan and either want to know more, or want to convey their thoughts about the implementation timeline, what should be implemented, what shouldn't be implemented, all of that, the best place that they can do it at is our Matbus Coordination Committee. Councilmember White and Councilmember McDougal are both on that, as well as many other local leaders. We will be starting the process of looking into 2027. The budgets have already been set for all the local communities for '26, but the first step in implementing a 2027 budget is looking at our service levels, so that'll be coming up pretty quick here, even though, you know, it's over a year away.
So if they have feedback, they can reach out to the Matbus Committee, I forget the official term that you mentioned, and then we aren't looking for implementation for anything that is proposed in this plan until 2027 or later?
Yep, that's correct. They can either reach out directly to the committee itself, or any of the local leaders that are on the committee.
Marvelous. And that list of committee members is posted on city websites, and so to encourage folks to reach out to those who represent them, I think is a great way to encourage not only that community engagement that Blue mentioned, but to reaffirm the fact that we are here to serve residents and make it an accessible place for everyone. So thank you very much again.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? See none, I would be looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Deb White. Second, Neesmeyer.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? See none, roll call vote, please.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mattson?
Yes.
Neesmeyer?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
McDougal?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Right, that motion passes. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight, and I hope you have a great week.
You too.
All right, moving on to mayor and council reports. Any councilmembers have reports from committees or boards? Councilmember Neesmeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a nice, long list, but I'd first like to start by sharing information from the Clay County Extension Committee. You saw three staff who regularly report at our Clay County Extension Committee, but what people may not know is that it is a statute of the state of Minnesota to have an extension committee that is combined from not only policymakers like myself, and I serve on that committee, but also community members. And so we are currently looking for Clay County Extension Committee members. If you are interested in applying, I highly encourage you to reach out to the University of Minnesota Clay County Extension Office, which is just up north in the Family, ugh, Family Services Building, is that what it's called? Yes.
Family Service Center.
Family Service Center, thank you. And if you don't have a chance to stop in between 8:00 and 4:00, feel free to reach out to me via email, cellphone, or phone call. I would love to email you that application. It's a wonderful committee, and staff come and do presentations like this, and we talk about programming and ways to get more people involved because of the beneficial ripple effects of the ANR, or Agriculture and Natural Resources, programming, as well as 4H. The second is, from that committee, they are currently looking for guidance from community members on what programming should look like for agriculture and natural resources programming in the future. And so there is a Google form out on Facebook and the website, if you would like to take just a few minutes to send out some thoughts and feelings about past things you have attended, or things that you would really like to see in Morehead or in our community. I think that there are some things that we take for granted, and we forget the work that goes behind, like One Vegetable, One Community is a program that is facilitated by the Master Gardeners of Clay County. Also, as Jill mentioned tonight, Flutter Fest, which the city was an outstanding collaborator and co-sponsor of that event last June, and they're making plans to have hosted a bigger and better event this summer. And so I want to appreciate the staff for being here, but also the collaboration that the city of Morehead does with a lot of those program leaders. Second, SWAC. I know I was talking about the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and we talk about trash and recycling. I had promised two sets of stats, but I only have one set of stats, a set of stats for what kind of trash we have in Clay County. Of the 3,340 pounds of trash, the group of volunteers was only able to go through 14% of it, and if you think about it, that's 3,340 pounds of trash from 100 homes. They survey the same 100 homes every year to get some stats on what people are throwing away, and what education and resources, as well as programs, we should have in our county. Forty-eight percent of the trash, or forty-eight percent of the contents that were counted were trash, 37% were organics. Things like potato peels and apples, there was a whole bag of apples, they hadn't even opened the apples. So that was quite the subject of talking of the group. And 14% of the trash that they counted were recyclables. So those are that we could drop into our curbside bins, if our homes have curbside bins, or take to a local drop site. So drop sites for like glass, or take to the Resource Recovery Center for batteries or electronic waste. Another great stat I have for you is the Take Back Jack. I have been talking about the programming. Councilmember Hendrickson helped me out by listing the locations at our last meeting, and so we were able to collect from November 1st to November 14th, 38.24 tons of pumpkins and squash to be donated and composted at a local farm. So many of you may have heard of Doubting Thomas Farms. They work with Clay County on a variety of programs, and one of them is the Take Back Jack program. So anybody who contributed their squash or pumpkins, I want to thank you for that. It has been a very successful program in our community for many years, and I love to see it growing year after year with more tonnage. I was able to participate in the Cast Clay Food Commission brainstorming session today. This fall, the steering committee had recommended that rather than having our regularly scheduled meetings, some brainstorming sessions to discuss our future and how to implement our steering, no, not steering committee, our strategic plan would be beneficial. Some stats that we got today at our meeting was 800 families were served at a pop-up food distribution last Wednesday at M State. They had wonderful attendance for individuals and families who are looking for food, and they stocked up for 800 families. They had a lot of wonderful volunteers, so I want to thank our community members, our organizations, and our individuals for showing up. They ran out of food in 1.5 hours. So in one and a half hours, they served 800 families. That number is just astounding to me. But I also think that normally these pop-ups serve about 400 families, and they could not serve everybody who showed up with the 800 families packets that they brought. So we know that things have changed, both federally, locally, and at the state, for food support, for SNAP benefits, for housing, lots of changes in our community. But it is nice to see volunteers show up, and the organizations work together with the Great Plains Food Bank to get food to families in need. We have our last brainstorming session, and I want to invite all community members, as well as those who have perhaps previously served on the Cast Clay Food Commission, to join us on Monday, December 15th, from 1:00 to 2:30 at MetroCog. MetroCog was pictured in some of the presentation materials tonight. It's a wonderful old building, the Case Plaza, I think it's called, downtown. Difficult to find your first time, but once you're there, come on up to the second floor and join us in some really great conversations about the future of the Cast Clay Food Commission. I also want to look forward to the holiday kickoff on Tuesday, December 2nd, which is like days away. December is just around the corner, it was wild. We have a holiday kickoff with a tree lighting, some cocoa, an ugly sweater contest, which I'm kind of looking forward to. I'm going to dig out that ugly sweater that I haven't worn in years and see how it goes. But what I really think is the collaboration between the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County, as well as the city of Morehead, to put on wonderful events that include things like the global market. So if you want to pick up some tasty bread or some great gifts, your opportunity will be at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd, here in the Yum Combs.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had a Morehead Public Library Board meeting, as well as a Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board meeting, and from those meetings, I just wanted to report to our community that we are going to do a fund Food for Finds program, running from December 1st to the 31st. And so this program allows our customers to bring in a non-perishable food item in exchange for a waived $2 late fee. So this is a win-win for our customers and our local food banks. And you may also ask, I don't have a late fee. That's okay. Our library would be happy to take your non-perishable food item and distribute it to our community. Last time we ran this program was in March 2017, and they provided 2,278 items to our residents, and so let's see if we can beat that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember White, and then we'll go back, or is it about?
It's about Emily's presentation. Can I just throw in?
Yep.
Councilmember Moore's recommendation to bring shelf-stable food. You may or may not know that our Morehead Public Library has a mitten tree, and it allows more than just mittens, hats, scarves, mittens, gloves, all the things. And so they currently, I was just at the library, and they have lots of tiny hats. So if your head is super tiny, they have a hat for you. But what they don't have, and is a very common need in our community, are gloves and mittens and scarves in adult sizes. So if you are a knitter, crocheter, or if you are cleaning out your closet and have some gently-used, or maybe even brand-new gloves and hats, when you bring your canned goods to waive your fees, bring some hats, mittens, and gloves, and just place them on the tree or give them to the staff. If the tree is overwhelmingly just full, the staff will take them and put them out as refills are necessary. So thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I actually wanted to touch on a couple of Matbus things. So we had our meeting on the 19th, and one of the things that you may have heard about that I'm very pleased about is, as of the 11th of November, Veterans Day, we now, Matbus provides free rides to all veterans on any fixed routes. And so if you're a veteran, all you have to do is show your veteran's ID when you board, and you can ride for free on any of our fixed routes. At our meeting, we also had a lengthy discussion about providing free and discount bus fares to folks who are struggling with being unhoused, or just are very also, very low income. One of the things that we know is one very important barrier that prevents people from getting out of poverty is lack of transportation. And so looking for ways that we can do it and help address that need. And I was, I'm thankful that in Morehead, we already do have a program. It's called the OUT Program. It's the Opportunities Under Transit. This is part of how we use some of our CDBG money that we dedicate, and I think in our next budget year, it's $15,000, and that can be used by service organizations where they can, social service organizations like Churches United can purchase discounted passes in bulk to distribute to folks, and it focuses on helping them with transportation related to work and social services. And so just something for us to think about of the, as the need continues to grow in our community, and that's something that we're doing, you know, perhaps we could add to it. But also, it was a great example where we could share that information with our other partners in Matbus, because currently, we are the only city in the metro that is doing that with CDBG money. And so nobody else has set up a fund like that, as Morehead has. So we provided that information, and perhaps others will think about doing that as well. On the 19th, I also attended a Red River Recovery Initiative meeting, and we had a presentation from Cass County Public Health on syringe services and pipe distribution, something that's been in the news, and Cass County has actually put their pipe distribution program on hold as part of their harm reduction work. But if you would like some information about that, I think there's a lot of false information, or just, you know, people have questions and don't really know much about how this works in terms of harm reduction, then they are, the information from those presentations is available. And so if you wanted to see recordings of it, or look at the slides, you can contact Robin at Cass County Public Health, or I can help connect you with that. And we also learned that we'll be part of a Minnesota OD Alert Pilot Program, and it's an exciting, we've been doing a lot of things with OD mapping here in our area. This will connect us with some state resources so that we can work on more coordinated responses when there are spikes in overdoses in our community, and work to have a better coordinated response. On the 20th, I attended the Heartland Trail Task Force meeting. We just started back up as a task force after the study was completed that's been going on for the last couple of years, and I was really excited to see, after our presentation from Dan Farnsworth here, that they actually have updated the study report and now have proposed that the start of the Heartland Trail be right in downtown Morehead. And so if this comes to fruition, it would be a great opportunity to start people off in our newly renovated downtown and have them go on, heading north on one of our prettiest trails that highlights some of the beauty here in Morehead. And one of the things that was mentioned is that, as we've talked about at our last council meeting, there are some meetings going on deciding what to do with the MPCA settlement money, and it was recommended that that might be a way that it could be used if we were to put some of that, or some or all of that, towards the trailhead at Civic Plaza in downtown Morehead. It could be used to put in some of the bike racks, other equipment that you would need for that trail, and not only, again, bringing people to our downtown, but getting them out there doing some healthy activities in our communities on our great trails. And then I just wanted to remind people, one of the great things coming up on the second is our city's tree lighting and holiday market, and this year, we are combining the Morehead And this year, we are combining the Morehead Global Market and the Farmer's Market. So in addition to the tree lighting and caroling and hot cocoa and fun things like that, we will have about 20 different vendors and kids' activities, and that's a mix of folks who are vendors from the summer farmer's market and from the global market. So it looks like it's going to be a really great time, and so I'm looking forward to that. And again, that's December 2nd, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McDougal, and then Councilmember Mattson.
Real quick, thank you, Madam Mayor. At our next meeting, December 8th, the Human Rights Commission will be giving out their Human Rights Awards. And just before that, they'll be having a social at 5:00 o'clock. So if you want to come a little early for that, feel free.
Thank you. Councilmember Mattson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for your patience with all the roll call votes tonight. I have COVID, and I just wanted to, number one, only ruin my Thanksgiving and not everyone else's by not, by, you know, breathing on you tonight. But also, just reminder, everyone, if you have not gotten your seasonal vaccinations, it's not too late to do that. I did get my COVID vaccine in September, so hopefully this will be brief. But COVID and flu, if you haven't gotten those, please get that on your calendar.
Thank you. Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. I, actually, I got to give the welcome to the State Capital Investment Committee visit, and that was on the 13th of November. And Dr. Bob Zimmerman gave a presentation about flood mitigation and our wastewater issues. And Jason Benson gave an overall presentation about the F-N diversion. So it was good, and they're really receptive to it, so that was a good, good thing. On the 14th, I attended the Salvation Army Red Kettle kickoff, and that was fun. NDSU brass played, and just, it was a good time. Great coffee. It's, you know, I love this time of year. And I just want to give a shout out to the MapBus and MetroCog. MetroCog, and I, both organizations do a lot for the, for the community, Fargo-Morehead community, so I really appreciate it. And I don't always say that, so thank you, guys. And with the vaccinations, I got the shingles vaccine, the flu vaccine, and the COVID vaccine all in the same day. Don't do that. So I have...
I'm glad you don't have the shingles. When you started saying that you have the shingles, I was wondering why you were here, but I'm glad you don't have it. Any other? Councilmember Nelson, you're the only one.
No, I can't top that, so I...
Okay, all right. So for mayor updates, since the last council meeting, I've attended 15 meetings and/or events since the last council meeting. Three that I wanted to highlight, there was a press conference last week regarding the Tri-City Proclamation that Morehead-Fargo and West Fargo did on Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. At the press conference, all local shelters were represented. Many of the executive directors have been in their positions for several decades, and each of them stated that, in their opinion, our communities are struggling a lot more this year than they ever have. They have seen a significant increase in the number of people that are seeking out food so that those, they can, the people seeking out food so that they can use the money that they have to, to pay for their homes or apartments or whatever. A lot of them are on the brink of homelessness, and so every dollar that they can save by going to get food, they can save to keep their homes and not end up being homeless. And with that, I do appreciate the fact that the New Life Center has found space to expand, and they are going to be able to offer an additional 24 beds this winter. And to give it, give some perspective, this summer, they averaged turning away seven individuals who were looking for a place to sleep each night, and they're anticipating that this number is going to rise as the weather gets colder. Additionally, Silver Linings in Morehead, which is able to provide 36 transitional housing units for adults who are 55 years of age and older, that is open. So that's an additional beds for individuals who are looking for a residence. And it's really unfortunate, but one of the things that was discussed was that older adults are becoming a much larger population than our homeless population. And the YWCA said that they recently worked with three women who are ages 80, 81, and 87, and who are homeless. So I think that is just important for us to be cognizant of some of the needs that are in our community and that people are struggling, and every dollar is, is trying, you know, helping to keep people from being homeless. So I was also at another press conference today with the other mayors and a number of primarily North Dakota dignitaries for the groundbreaking of the new Veterans Memorial Cemetery. That's North O'Reilly's Acres in Fargo. This is a regional cemetery for veterans that serves North Dakota, Minnesota, and South Dakota, and is designed to be utilized up through 2050. And I really think that this is just another example of the collaboration and partnership that exists between our shared communities. And then just kind of a quick update on the diversion. I attended three diversion meetings last week. The one that I wanted to provide an update is from the Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority, the acquisition status for the properties on the Minnesota side. We have 175 property rights that were retained, 55 properties that are pending evaluation, two flowage easements were signed since the last month, six properties are still in eminent domain, two railroad agreements are pending, and nine properties are in negotiation. So on the Minnesota side of the project, we are 72.7% complete with property acquisitions. And in regards to flowage easements, again, to, to give you a perspective of the work that's been going on the last couple of years with the diversion, there is 20,343 acres of flowage easement have been acquired between the states of North Dakota and Minnesota, with 6,747 acres remaining. So still a lot of work to be done before it is open in 2027, but we're making significant progress. So those are my reports for today, for tonight's meeting, I should say, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Molly for city manager updates.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief. I'll just say wishing everyone a happy week of thanks and giving. And as a reminder, City Hall is closed this Thursday, but as we say, local govern, local essential operations are the kind of the last to shut down. So thanks to everyone on Team Morehead. This includes, we may see some street truck drivers out there this week, police, fire, folks out at wastewater, any number of places, all the folks that'll be working over the holiday. The, you know, we have four really special seasons in this area. We do three of them really well, frankly. There's a fourth one that some of us really, every year, work hard to try to encourage people to get outside and enjoy. That's the one that we're facing right now. And so just letting everyone know that Mary's Light Tunnel is in Viking Ship Park. Will go online technically this Wednesday, November 26th in the evening, but it's already on. So as you're leaving tonight, feel free to drive down and check it out. It's really special, 120 feet. And just wanted to say a thank you to Visit Fargo-Morehead for its partnership in this incredible regional attraction, and expect more fun surprises this winter.
Thank you. We do not have an executive session tonight, and we do not have any new business, so it is 6:35 PM. And with that, we are adjourned. Good night, Morehead.